Hey, Robert.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. Why is it so dark in here?
That's my friend. I don't want my friend.
It's cool. Thank you. We are ready. Going to do it. All right. Time being seven o'clock. Call into session the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for November 3rd, 2022. All members are present. On the agenda this evening at seven o'clock, we have Casco, Steve Doms for 314 Plymouth Street for a site plan review. At 7:30, we have the Party Trust, Amanda Estates, a Form A. We have meeting minutes for approval and signatures of October 6th and October 20th, as well as correspondence and notices from Abudding Towns. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And is Casco... Is that present? Okay. Oh, okay. What's that?
What are we pointing at?
Oh, okay.
Can I have the technology?
He said Zoom. I'm looking for like a computer.
Yeah, I was looking for a screen.
Okay.
Is there anybody there, though?
I don't know.
You can't see them in there?
I never heard anyone call in.
In an effort of not us all just sitting around staring at blocks, can we call Caesar up here?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You guys are tan, reminding me of summer.
Just remind. Thank you.
Love summer.
Did you see them?
Just like up on the...
Rick and Bert, very tan.
I know, but I missed that push and butt.
Yeah, I know. I'd mess up something.
Do you mind saying that thing about the agenda?
I don't think so. I think that that would be... This would be a good time.
One, two minutes instead.
Brendan would like to address...
So while we're waiting, I just filled in the rest of the board that at our last meeting, it was brought to our attention that the agenda and what the agenda points are on a weekly or meeting basis aren't always the easiest to find as far as correspondence is concerned. So I took to... I took our agenda, downloaded it, and shared it to the Halifax Community Page, the Halifax Locals page, and I live in Highland Woods, so we have a page. So I shared it there. It's a little bit late, but I just wanted everybody to know that we did take some kind of action on that to try to share it out so that it was... A concern was heard, and we're trying to do our best to address it. So for the record.
Okay. Caesar, question for you. If we had someone that was interested in coming in on a Zoom call, do we have that ability here?
In this room, we're still working.
Okay.
And it's something which will be going down to next week.
Okay.
So do we have somebody on Zoom now that's here for 314 Plymouth Street? Or do you know?
There is someone involved. I don't know who it is.
Okay.
Are we able to just get the audio on that? Can you show us how?
It's already called.
Is it muted?
Nobody... I think we called you up here because nobody answered us, and we might...
That means there must not be anyone.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Whoever's on the Zoom call can hear you now.
I sent him the Zoom link.
Is it on mute or anything?
Nope. I helped her wait before you guys saw her. I just told her she got unmuted.
Okay.
So they have to call in? Is that who?
So it's a woman?
I'm mad that you asked me. My manager's not on there and seeing her.
Steve Johnson was supposed to be on September.
Okay.
And I sent him the agenda. I sent him the Zoom link.
You busted in.
Is he done?
There's no one there.
Can we triple check that that's unmuted?
I'm sorry.
Can we just check that that's been unmuted?
No, it is.
It is.
She's on seriously.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
I'll be on seriously.
All right, cool. All right, I'll take a look at the checklist and everything else.
So wasn't this that we weren't going to actually see them until December? Anybody else remember that? That they were going to wait for the 30 days and come to the S...
This is the first I remember of this project.
I'm sorry?
This is the first I recall for this project.
Maybe it was...
You're thinking of different... You were talking about the Zero Plymouth Street last year? I mean, last week? Last meeting?
No. Bert, didn't you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting and bring back some documentation and say something about December? Or am I remembering that incorrectly?
Uh, there was something in the minutes, too, that made reference to when they were coming back, I think.
We extended it 90 days on October 6th. Okay. On behalf of our client, R&amp;J LLC Silver Engineering Associates, request that the scheduled public hearing for October 6th, 2022, for a special permit to construct a building in excess of 15,000 square feet, be opened and continued without testimony to your scheduled meeting of December 1st, 2022. This request will allow time for Silver Engineering Associates to submit a completed site plan and application by the November 7th, 2022 filing deadline. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
I don't know.
And they sent this one, right?
And that's the newest?
Yep.
That they just got?
No, that's for the storage. That's not for... Yeah, for the 15,000 square foot in excess of...
But that was the same property that I just read?
Same property, but it's not the same application.
Right?
Yeah, different application.
Okay. 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 And there's nobody, yeah.
But it's both still R&amp;J LLC.
You see what I mean? It's the same everything, so it's confusing. All right, so I'll read this one out loud. This is a different one for petition 981. What was that petition? They're both petition 981. So something's not right with that. Um, Town Planning Board, um... Yeah, but they're both labeled petition 981. So is it the same?
981 is the same.
We wouldn't have... We wouldn't have... Okay, so on this letter, they have 981. This one that you just handed out?
He just sent the...
Yeah, so that's probably an error? Okay. So I'll just put that question. Dear Board Members, on behalf of our client, R&amp;J LLC Silver Engineering Associates, request that the scheduled public hearing for December 1st, 2022, for a special permit to construct a building in excess of 15,000 square feet, be continued without testimony to your scheduled meeting of January 5th, 2023. Significant progress has been made on the detailed site plan. This request will allow for Silver Engineering Associates to submit the completed site plan and application by the December filing deadline. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Lawrence Silver. And that was stated yesterday. So are we going to make a motion to extend it?
Okay. We have to extend it to December. So we're not asking to send it through January. But definitely not going to do it tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
But if he...
So the difference...
Right, I get it. But if he here...
Um, I think not. The part of the confusion being that we're in the different room. We have the different stuff, and I'm not 100% sure that... I'm just not that he hasn't tried to contact us.
Right.
I would rather give an extra opportunity to hear from him.
Yeah. Well, I mean, his 30 days is up the 19th, so...
I was just going to say, what's our timeline look like on this?
So 30 days on getting board comments is the 19th of November. I think our next meeting's the 17th of November. And so if they wanted to wait until after that, then we could put them on December 1st. But we'd need an extension because the 45 days would be... Well, I mean, I guess we'd make it, but we might as well give them a 30-day extension. Or ask them to give us a 30-day extension.
In the event that we... They do not accept the extension, we will have one more meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's the best approach.
Can you not call into them to talk to them? Or you're not allowed to make the phone call in case they're waiting for someone you don't need?
I totally do, Mary. I just don't know what their phone number would be.
Well, is that the connection to... Is he saying someone's on the phone?
Yeah, unfortunately, they're not... They're not talking. So without a way to contact them directly, I think it would be best to give an extra opportunity to hear from them.
Yeah, I agree. So do we want to...
Especially if it's some issue...
If I get a contact number on the application, the secretary doesn't have it?
Nope. Other than an email or a thing, I mean, a personal phone number wouldn't be something that would be required.
Well, it is.
Isn't there a phone number on the bottom? Isn't there a phone number on the bottom of the letter they sent?
That's Larry Silva.
Yeah, so this... Yep.
But it's still civil engineering.
Right?
It's still civil engineering. There is phone numbers content.
Yeah, so this is the same owner. However, he has two different... It appears that he has two different projects being represented by two different people.
Oh, two different engineering firms? I thought it was the same.
So this here...
So...
This letter here has nothing to do with what the appointment is.
Right.
That's...
But it was confusing.
People that have the appointment, for some reason, they wish there'd be nobody there. They'll be home.
Right. Yeah.
But they're still good until the 23rd, right? Those 30 days?
30 days is the 19th of November. 45 days would be, um...
Let me... I'm talking about this one that's on the appointment.
December 4th.
Says 30 days, 11/23.
Well, the application date's 10/20, so I did the application date plus 30 plus 45, which I come out with a different date. But yes, Rick, we'll have another meeting. So we'll just schedule them for the next one and...
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll take it to be granting any extra extensions if somebody doesn't either hasn't showed up or is just having some technical...
Especially where I can actually see the Zoom and confirm. I'd feel better about it.
Okay. Yeah, me too.
But I don't think maybe we can give the president any extra extension. It's just the next meeting still falls within their original extension timeline.
True.
By like two days. Right?
It's just a site plan review.
For our...
So I'll take a motion to move the site plan review until our next scheduled meeting on November 17th?
Okay. I'll make a motion to take the R&amp;J LLC 314 Plymouth Street site plan review from today until November 17th, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the site plan review for urgent care?
Site plan.
Not that one there?
No.
No. So we have no site plan to review?
Right.
Bingo.
Yeah, if we actually had... Let's see. So we do actually.
But...
But at this point where we've moved it... Yeah.
We have to wait. What time is it?
All right. I'd like to... As we wait for our next appointment, I'd like to take a minute to approve and review the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 6th, 2022 meeting minutes as written. And we had Bert, Mark, Brendan, and myself. Right? Wait a minute. Mark, Bert, Rick, and myself.
I believe me and Brendan were both absent on October 6th.
Rick, Bert, and Amy.
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2022 as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes? This one, I have not read the whole thing yet.
This next one will be Melius, Troop, and Elliott. Rick, Mary, and Robyn Dean are both absent on October 20th. I need a minute.
Did you get that? Here's the name to tell you which ones we need to... Who needs to sign.
Oh, I see. Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Those are just across about a bit more. These are the actual ones that need to be signed over.
Okay. Gotcha.
Join on the minutes of October 20th, 2022, page 1, the last big paragraph at the bottom. I don't know if it came across the tape or if it was a typo. It says approximately about almost 500. Is that correct? Or is it supposed to just be one of them? It's a 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down where Mr. Webby was saying. I didn't know if it was just a typo or if that was actually on the tape.
It's done for a video.
Okay.
Yeah, most of it is.
And page... Do you want page 2 on the very bottom, too? On the very last line, it says further down... Is that further down the street or further down the...
Where I...
Says here, page 2, the very last line.
This is something...
Further down the...
Sheet.
Very last, very last line.
That's probably a street. I think that must be street. I doubt it. Sheet, right? Hold on a minute.
Okay, hold on. I believe in that I was referring to the plan on...
The sheet.
On the sheet.
Okay. So it is correct?
Yeah, the sheet of...
It...
Of the building plan.
Okay.
In context, I believe that is.
I didn't have anything else on it.
It's kind of like America's funniest quotes in those minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written for October 20th, 2022.
Second.
All... All those in favor? Wait, hold on. Just... I just wanted to make sure that... Yep. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm going to vote on that. I'm sorry.
That's why I just wanted to make sure we had the right group. That's all.
Disregard my eye.
All right. This one here is Rick and Bert.
Oh, I'm not.
Now, I think... I believe... I believe you still are on that.
Oh, that's this one?
Yeah.
That's Amy's on top there.
Thank you.
Not that.
No. Thank you. There you go.
Okay. All right.
One, 1240R. We have a few minutes, right?
Yeah, a few minutes.
We have seven minutes.
1240R.
So we are receiving notices from municipal officials in the MBTA communities, and the Town of Halifax did not subscribe to 40R. So we should send back an email to Kevin Murray and let him know that we are not a 40R MBTA community. On a funny note, since we have a few minutes, I was... It was brought to my attention that Plymouth is a... Well, Plymouth is a 40R community, which is the MBTA community. But it's funny, so down Cottage Park is where they have a lot of those communities, the 40Rs, all the apartments that we were... They were allowed to build due to the MBTA train being right there. And the tracks from Kingston to Plymouth are being talked about being taken up. Isn't that interesting? So they can subscribe to a 40R law, but then they can take up the tracks, which is the whole reason for them being built. So they would lose their commuter rail ability, which is the whole reason that they were allowed.
After they had the approval?
Yes.
Taken up the tracks where? To the cottage?
Yeah. Where the apartments are. And they were already built.
You said, "Where'd you hear that?"
Yeah.
I heard that from a former owner of the tracks.
That's interesting.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah, especially if that's the only way that a thing like that would have gotten approved. Oh, thank you.
What's that?
I had no idea.
Well, that's not very nice. You didn't bring enough for everybody?
Yeah, is this... Is this for everyone?
I... I don't know. It's a robust proposal.
Oh.
Oh, God. Never mind, I don't want it.
I was actually not aware of this. Hmm, three. All right. Well, moving forward in the matter of...
Two minutes.
The appointment that we have tonight, there's been a request that I recuse myself. I have received one in the past, at which point I have to contact the Ethics Board. And last time, I had to have a meeting. So I believe that's my next step on that. But at that point, I'd prefer not to involve myself until that time. All right. So at this point, I think I am going to walk away from the meeting and I'll figure out what to do next. I don't want to act on it at all until I get clarification on that. I believe that's my next step is I have to talk to Ethics and see if I am in fact supposed to recuse myself.
So are you... What does that mean for the rest of this meeting? Are you recusing yourself in the next conversation or are you not recusing yourself?
I am... I'm not recusing myself. I'm not involving myself. I don't know what the difference is there.
Okay. I don't know.
I would prefer not to move... All right. So my personal preference is I don't want to move forward at all until I get clarification on whether I should act or do anything. That's just me personally. I don't want to get involved with this. I don't want to deal with the crap. So I'm just going to walk away, figure out what I should do, and I'm going to come back. So if that's cool with you guys?
Isn't that a definition of recusing yourself?
I don't know if that's... I don't want to technically recuse myself if I'm not supposed to.
If I'm understanding you correctly, you're going to make leave of absent and not do either at this time.
At this time?
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Like, I don't...
Yeah.
So like...
So do we have...
I don't want to make a determination either way. I want to figure out what I'm supposed to do and then... You know what I mean?
If that's the case, do we have the ability, since you're the chair, to move forward with action tonight if the rest of the board chooses to, if you're just walking away?
Yes.
Yeah, I would...
Just like if he wasn't here for our meeting.
Like you just went and took a really long bathroom break?
Oh, I am. Well, yeah.
Okay.
I just don't feel like going...
If you just postpone it, you're going to figure out what you want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just not comfortable going forward, and I don't want to make any sort of formal thing because this is all above me as far as legal stuff.
What is there... So this is for the 7:30 appointment?
Yeah.
Do you want to bring up... May I ask what...
We need to open it. I believe.
But does he have to recuse himself before we open it?
No, I'm just going to...
No, I mean, does he need to walk away? Because rather than postpone it...
Yeah, right.
Because rather than postpone it, what if there's?
That's what I'm saying, before you guys even do anything?
Is there a time, my only question is this, if we postpone it, it's everything's all about deadlines and timelines and things like that?
There's a timeline, and it's an A and R, which means there's a 14-day timeline.
So 14 days?
Twenty-one, actually. 14? The state's 14 and we are.
So that doesn't allow us to postpone it?
Correct.
I don't know that also doesn't allow us to make a meeting before then.
An extra meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
That's us, yeah.
I know it's 7:30, you guys got your stuff to do, I'm not dealing with it. I'm taking off, I'll find out what I'm supposed to do, I appreciate it. And
Okay.
Good luck.
So who's the vice chair?
Me.
Okay.
All right.
Good luck, everybody. Have a good day. Okay.
I think that's only, same thing where we, we just got this letter tonight, and actually my line says, "Mr. Robert Gaynor, I'm requesting you to request yourself from the matter." I assume that means recuse yourself. But I think bottom line, we should, in fact, I'd make a motion to postpone the hearing on this.
You can't make a motion on it because of the fact that you'd be involving yourself in it without getting invited.
But I haven't recused myself, nor do I think,
But you can't make a motion on that.
I have to find out whether or not.
You can't make a motion on that or else you're acting.
Based on, on a letter that I should do, telling me what I should do?
That's basically what Mark just did. He walked away because if you make a motion on it, you're acting on it.
Well, I disagree, but anyway, I, my opinion is I think we should postpone it.
We can postpone it though.
Or continue it rather than to our next meeting, till we get a definitive answer.
It would be an automatic approval, so we cannot.
Why would it be an automatic approval?
Because it's an A and R.
When, what's the date of application?
I have it right here. It's 11:1, our next meeting is 11:17.
Fourteenth and nineteenth?
Oh.
Fourteenth is fifteen. Fourteen is fifteen.
Fourteenth, sixteenth of?
Fifteenth.
Of what month?
November.
Wash the toilet.
So we have another, we have another meeting?
No, we don't.
So.
So.
Just for clarification, because everybody up here seems to be talking a specific language that maybe I'm just not, hold on, let me just ask the question first so it's clear for everybody. So our 7:30 meeting is for Amanda Way, that's on the agenda. Gordon brought a letter to Mark and Bert, asking them to recuse themselves for whatever's in that letter. With an A and R, what I'm understanding is that we only have 14 days from date of application, otherwise it's an automatic approval. So if we extend it to the next meeting, or postpone it to the next meeting, it would fall outside that 14 days, would make it an automatic approval, which is not how we work. So.
We still have a quorum.
And we still have a quorum.
So we have to open it and talk about it.
Okay. Right. So if, whether you refuse yourself or not, we would still have a quorum.
Brendan, do you have something that says 14 days that we have from the?
Yeah, it's an R.
Yeah, it's an R.
We're going to decide whether, what we're going to do with it right now, Adam. We are trying to decide as a board who's going to participate and who's not, so no.
So if you have a long time period and we can't extend those time periods if necessary?
Again, I said no, you're acting out of order. You're acting out of order. Again, Adam, we will, we will mute you. You are being told that we are deliberating as a board, and we will open it up. We have people who are not sure whether they need to recuse themselves. So please, again, we are not accepting comment from you at this time, nor any other public person.
So this is, so this is four A, but we're talking about A and R. So it's that, right, that's on the four A.
Joanne, he just made mention of chapter forty, it'd be, he was under the impression it was 21 days, so how do we find out if it's 21 or 14?
This is the one that we were going over with zoning bylaw review that we were, and I'm trying, I'm confusing it in my head, so we need to make clarification.
Absolutely.
But I think it's.
Let's get it right. I agree.
I'm pretty sure it's 14. I think the state is 21 and we're 14, because if it was the opposite, we wouldn't be allowed to do so.
Who was out this time?
That's the right one.
14 days, chapter 81 P, 21 days. So it's Halifax is 14 days, the state is 21 days. So.
Okay.
That.
Yes.
Find that, or I'll find that.
It's 2356C, it's right here. Thank you, Brendan. Six C? See, endorsement of plan not requiring approval. If the board determines that the plan does not require approval under the subdivision control law, it shall, without a public hearing and within 14 days from the date of submission, endorse on the plan the words "approval" under the subdivision control law not required and the space provided there for 14 days.
If it does not require a site plan review?
Subdivision control. So it's, we have 14 days. Are you going to act or are you going to go to Ethics so that we can figure out what to do here?
I don't know, I'm going to ask for recess for five minutes, I have to make a phone call. I'm going to ask for recess.
Make a motion, do we have a recess for five minutes, the planning board? On favor?
Aye.
Aye? What time is it? Meeting back into session? Have a motion for that?
Make a motion, make a motion reasonably meaning.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What I would like to do is I'd like to table this petition so that I have an opportunity to call the Ethics Commission and find out disclosure-wise whether, whether or not, I don't feel that I need to recuse myself. However, I think what we could do for the 15, or 14-day limit there is we could call and repost a meeting for this petition 48 hours prior to sitting down and then schedule another meeting to within the 15 days so that we could hear the petition.
So you have time for that, because I don't.
Well.
Hold on, you need a motion, let's see if he, go ahead.
In the next, I mean, election season.
You need a motion. So that's your motion?
Yes, to table this petition until parties have, myself have an opportunity to, in fact, disclose whether or not I need to recuse myself with the Ethics Commission, at least give me an opportunity to find out with the Ethics Commission whether or not I need to recuse myself. And then we can post another meeting 48 hours prior and hear this petition, whatever their decision should happen to be. And if they tell me, yes, I need to recuse myself, then I will certainly do that. But until we find out from the Ethics Commission, I don't think we should second guess ourselves.
Then why don't we ask for?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Hold on, Amy, just trust the process. Just the process.
I know, but I understand, I just want to say this ahead of time, if we have an extension, then we won't have an extra meeting, because I know over the next 14 days, I don't.
I understand that, but he's going to make a motion, if it's.
I'm not asking for an extension.
I understand what you're asking for, just everybody, please, stay calm, he's made a motion, does he have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. So, does not pass. See? Trust the process.
Okay.
So here's why that's not going to pass, as far as I'm concerned. I find it, with all due respect, because you know I respect you, borderline inappropriate that we have two members of the board that, one did not recuse himself and the other asked to take a recess and make a phone call to somebody when we don't know what is going on here, we have an agenda. Something doesn't smell right, and it seems like we're trying to find loopholes and angles and phone calls to people rather than follow due process, which is what our bylaws are for, which is what our obligation is for. So. So I feel as though we need to continue, by letter of our bylaws of our town, to continue without asking for special permission, because two of the people may be in conflict and don't know what to do about that from a morals or ethics standpoint. I think that leaving without accusing is an interesting move, and I think asking for a recess to make a phone call to somebody before understanding what to do and then coming back and asking for special exceptions on obviously a rather interesting topic doesn't sit well with me or my morals. So that's why I said no. So at the end of the day, we're going to have to move forward, and you're going to have to make a decision respectfully, whether or not you want to be involved and then deal with Ethics afterwards, or recuse yourself and not deal with the topic on the agenda, or go take a really long bathroom break like Mark did. But I feel as though those are the three options.
If I may respond? Amy, okay, can I?
I am not somebody that hinders freedom of speech.
So I, if I understand correctly, we were having five people here and discussing as to what we're going to, what we can do and cannot do legally and whatnot, and the five of us couldn't come up with an answer. So I asked for a recess to make a phone call to see if I, if in fact I should be disclosing and recuse myself, and you have a problem with that? That I have, that I should check and see who's right? When the five of us together, putting our heads together, couldn't come up with an answer. So I call, I call to find out about that and to try to find information, and you have a problem with that, I understand, Brendan, what's wrong with that?
I think that based on the information of the agenda item, the decision that needs to be made tonight, based on the timeline, and based on the information that was presented with two people on this board's involvement on some level, and because of that, those people could not make a decision from a morals or an ethics standpoint, and so now we're asking to.
Find out if you can make a.
Find a loophole, hold on.
It's not a loophole, it's whether or not it's by law.
Special exceptions are loopholes.
It's what?
Special exceptions, special meetings are loopholes. We have 14 days.
So that's not within our bylaws?
So what I'm saying is, from a public perspective, from a residential perspective, we had a meeting for a very interesting, important conversation on our agenda that clearly the room is here to discuss, and two of the board members are involved in some way that are calling into question the ethics of their involvement in the, whether it's from the past or in their current situation. We need to make a decision, and if you, you have the ability to say, "I'm either going to move forward and deal with Ethics afterwards, recuse yourself, or just walk away," and we still have quorum if you choose to do so.
So let me ask you this, if, if the date of application was 11:01, and prior to hearing, hearing that, the petition in front of us, do you consider that a loophole, Brendan, that 10 minutes before the meeting starts from, you had from November 1 until tonight's date, and wait till 10 minutes before the meeting start, was in, was in maybe a loophole or something a little?
I agree.
Okay.
I can agree with you that that.
So why wouldn't the board want an opportunity to at least research that?
I understand that the timing is interesting of matters, I think that the following behavior has become very eyebrow, or, you know, eye-raising, or however you want to put it, precarious, right? However, a resident of the town presented, and you could very well have read that letter and said, "No, I'm not going to recuse myself," and that is your right at your own risk, right?
Right, so that's why I think we should have an opportunity to find out legally what we are or not.
But unfortunately, our bylaws say that we need to have a conversation within 14 days, and the two dates don't have, don't give us that opportunity.
What if you don't have a quorum?
I'm sorry?
What if you don't have a quorum?
I don't know what happens then.
We'd have to reschedule.
As soon as we don't.
So what if I recuse too, so I have two of you, so you have no quorum?
Well, I would tell you that if that is the case, if that is the case that the two of you would choose to do, I would find it interesting, I would find that behavior very interesting, let's put it that way.
Well, I find this behavior interesting, letters are just going to put, to knock the board down to three.
Okay.
Well, then, I want to ask you guys a question. Did you receive a phone call from Sandy Nolan today? Rick, did you receive a phone call from Sandy Nolan today?
No.
Did you receive a phone call from Sandy Nolan today?
Not that I know of.
I did. And our acting town administrator, who was put on by one selectman, called me today and stated that I was to act in certain ways and that she already contacted Chairman Milias. And I told her that it was illegal for her to do so, and that it was out of line and unethical. And I couldn't believe that she was telling me on a telephone about that while telling me what was going on on Facebook regarding this. While I was working and moving an elderly person, she says she has enough time to look on Facebook and call me up to tell me as an elected official how to act tonight. And I just think that the public ought to know that.
Okay, so let's figure this out. So despite what the letter, which is obviously within every resident's right to request anything, now what your decision is from there is your decision and it's at your disclosure, right, or it's at, it's at your discretion, thank you, I'm sorry, discretion, to make a decision. Now, if, based on that letter and based on the agenda item we have in front of us, if one doesn't recuse himself but leaves, you do the same thing, and then Rick recuses himself, that is something that.
Why would Rick recuse himself?
Well, because that's what he asked, that's what he said.
Oh, oh.
He said that, not me.
Oh, oh, you mean just leave?
So I'm just saying, just let's be careful of our, how we're talking to each other, right? So at the end of the day, if that's the decision that you guys make, that's obviously within your right, as you know, I just, it would be a very interesting move, that's all.
Well, it's just pretty shady what's going on, this whole thing right now, so that's what.
Why is it shady?
I don't even know what's going on, I don't know what.
I don't either, recuse.
I don't know what's going on.
I don't know those facts either, I, here, all I know is that.
And I think if people have that opinion on both ends of the table here, that we should certainly find out legally what we should and should not be doing as the board, or that could be.
It's not as the board, so that's where you're.
Well, as the board voting on a particular issue.
I think that's where you're misunderstanding. What the board should do is not at issue here. What you and Chairman Milias should do is what's at issue here. Your individual decision has nothing to do with my decision. So at the end of the day, again, we were not privy to the letter whenever it was delivered, we're not privy to.
Whenever it was delivered 10 minutes ago.
I get that, but I didn't get a copy, which I clearly made a decision, so all I'm trying to say is let's work through it, we understand, we're all here, we're all eyewitnesses to it. So all I'm saying is, is that we don't know what was in that letter, based on that letter, which you guys took five minutes to read, one guy got up and left, and the other guy got up to take a recess to make a phone call, which you have every right to do. Now we're coming back trying to ask for special meetings, special exceptions for extensions, because we only have 14 days to do it in the next meeting.
That's, that's not true.
At the end of the day, that's not following our bylaws.
What I, what I said was, I didn't say I'm going to do that, I said what we have, what we could do is certainly the scenario. the scenario would be, find out what legally, and as an option, we could always, I'm not saying that I'm making the motion here or whatever, down the road, we can certainly have the opportunity to hear this position with, petition within the 14 days if we scheduled a meeting.
An extra meeting during election time and other, and people have-
We've certainly done it before, yes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
People have other plans.
Hold on, please. Then you made a motion to have an extension with a special meeting or a, a separate meeting, and it didn't pass. So the, the rule is the rule. The bylaws are the bylaws. So now you make a decision whether to move forward or not. That's where we stand.
So what if, what if, how's the 14 days work? If, if you have an appointment with the planning board and there's no quorum? How does that work, the 14 days?
Again-
Automatic pass? That's why it's important to have a quorum.
So I would say that if he walked out, because he walked out, then that would be pretty sad because you wouldn't be standing for your board.
But, but hold on, I think to your point-
Obligation.
I agree. I understand that the letter was not something that you were prepared, anybody here was prepared for. However, it's within the resident's right. Now, at the end of the day though, that's within his right, but we have an obligation as elected people. So he has the right to bring up a letter to request two people to act in a certain way, but we have an obligation as elected officials. So if he refuses himself or gets up and leaves and then you refuse yourself and then we don't have a quorum, that's kinda going against your obligation of your duty to the town. I think.
I would agree.
As opposed to acting unsure of what exactly should be, so if bottom line, what do we, what do you do Brendan when, bottom line, I, I go to the Ethics Commission and they say, "Oh, Mr. Gaynor, you're, you're all set. There is no conflict or what there," and yet now it's, it's all over and done with. It's all gone. Same thing with Mark.
Yep.
So we acted incorrectly.
That's, that's not how you acted incorrectly. You made a decision to refuse yourself to find out ethic, on, on where you stood ethically. And in the meantime, we followed our bylaws and our timeline to make a decision based on a, on a topic on the agenda, which by the way, not for nothing, but for whatever reason, I, for you and Mark to need to seek counsel, there's obviously something that the two of you knew-
Yeah, it's called a lawsuit.
I understand. You need to, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying, because I'm trying, I'm with Brett Kilber here. I have no idea what's going on. I'm trying to piece this together like everybody else in the room. So here's what happened. Amanda Estates is on our agenda. We knew Amanda Estates was gonna be on this agenda. Somebody else in this room knew that you and Mark on some level didn't pull it out of thin air, have some kind of connection in some way, shape or form to that agenda point. So what really should have happened, if you really wanna go down that rabbit hole, not saying that you got sabotaged or ambushed, but to say, "I have some kind of connection to some way, shape or form to Amanda Estates and by my obligation and right and and obligation to the town of Halifax, I should find out from the Ethics Committee ahead of time whether or not I should be here." What just happened is somebody did your homework for you and brought it to your attention 10 minutes before we were gonna bring it up. That's what happened. You made a motion, it didn't pass, and now we're gonna have to have a, a conversation about what your decision is to do next.
So if it was my, my obligation beforehand, if you saw Amanda Estates knowing, knowing the past lawsuits and whatnot, wasn't it your obligation to say, "Hey, hey Bert, you better find out about this?"
I don't know about-
Well, that's what I'm talking about. This is all five, 10 minutes before the meeting started. Boom, here it is.
No, you didn't hear me. So some way, shape or form you knew that Aunt Mark knew that in some way, shape or form you have some kind of connection to Amanda Estates. True or false?
Being on the, passed on the zoning board of appeals, sure. Nothing to do with the planning board, nothing with my position here as a planning board member.
I understand that, but you've had some kind of interaction with this agenda point prior to this meeting.
Some kind of interaction.
Right. So that's why we have the ethics-
Haven't we all, yes.
Right. So, well, no, we haven't, because I haven't. I have no problem with Amanda Estates. I have no interactions with Amanda Estates. So therefore, I don't have any reason to go to the Ethics Board ahead of time seeing that-
I had no reason to go to the-
Where you and Mark have had some kind of interaction. Otherwise, when given a letter, you wouldn't need it to seek counsel.
I had no, no reason to go to the Ethics Board prior, prior to receiving this letter 10 minutes before the year.
But you had a reason to take a recess and make a phone call to make sure that you were protecting yourself, which you have every right to do. But what I'm saying is, is you were not ambushed. You knew that that was on the agenda point.
It had nothing to do with protecting myself, uh, Brendan. I, I wanted to do the right thing, the, the right legal thing, the right, uh, whether I should disclose or not, or whether it's, this is just a, a frivolous letter to, to act on. It's-
So at the end of the day-
Nothing to do with my, my legal standing.
So at the end of the day, well, that's what the Ethics Committee is for, is to make sure that you're not legally at fault for acting out of order, right? So on something that you shouldn't. So based on the information that you were just provided, also knowing that Amanda Estates was on the agenda, you have a decision to make. Do you move forward and deal with ethics? And, and by the way, if you move forward and find out that the Ethics Committee says that you're all in the clear, no harm, no fault.
Now, how is that? It's already voted on and everything. It's already done.
What's already voted on?
It, it, the Amanda Estates petition. It's already over and done with within the 14 days.
It's not. What are you talking about?
I'm talking about if you, if I recuse myself tonight and you've-
I'm not, see, that's what I'm saying. Now, can you hear me? The first, you have, you have three options. Option one is to stay and be involved. And then the Ethics Committee is gonna review it and say, "You should not have," and then there's consequences. So now you're liable to act in that manner. The second one is to recuse yourself and then you're outside the 14 days, but that's what you took. That's the choice you made in order to protect yourself and your liability in the situation. The third one is to do neither and get up and go take a long bathroom break.
Well, the fourth one would, certainly there's the fourth one is to act on it, have the, have the Ethics Commission come back and say, "Yeah, uh, you have absolutely no problem with, with voting on this." That would be the, the fourth one.
That was his first option.
That was your first option?
No, no, you said, you know, that you should not have.
So I'm sorry. The first option was whatever the-
To get a decision.
With a different decision.
So you're right. So at the end of the day, now, if you decide to walk and Rick decides to walk, we now have three members that took an obligation to this town and its residents to put their own personal feelings, agenda, thoughts, whatever, aside and do what's right for the town. That would not happen if we lose quorum time. And that recording, and that recording would have that, which I don't know if ethics or the public have any kind of recourse on that. I would say, I would have to imagine that when something passes through us, whether because it was voted on or through a loophole technicality of losing quorum, so it automatically passes, goes to the next board. And the next board is gonna read what happened here tonight, if that happens, and it may not get through them. So what I would do is I would make a decision based on what's right for the town and go from there.
Well, I, I made my motion to what I thought I should do and-
It failed.
So that's... Where is Amanda Estates to make the presentation? Oh, there you are. Are you there?
Well, he's not.
But that doesn't matter, because-
Right now, we haven't even opened it.
Right.
I haven't even seen the plan because we got it at 2:57 PM today.
But we can't move forward without-
I mean, really seen it.
We can't move forward without whatever decision you make, which is your decision. It's not, you're not being forced to do anything. It's whatever you choose is right for your best interest.
Well, I think I'm gonna follow Mark. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting and then, uh, find out what I have to do or not do and I don't think we should be voting on it without, without, uh, proper counsel on it. And I don't mean legal. I mean one way or the other, whether it's ethics. So I'll, I'll leave it to you three.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have two, we have two board members that have not refused themselves but have chosen to remove themselves in order to seek counsel from the Ethics Committee as to their involvement with this matter. We still currently have quorum. So we could technically open this agenda point.
And I will do so-
You are the vice chair.
Correct right now. Open a Form A application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval for a location of Amanda's Way, map number 15, lot number 13. If more than one map, da, da, da. Name of applicant, Amanda Monte. Name of surveyor, Webby Engineering. Name of owner, The Party Trust. The deed of property recorded in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 49506, page 64. File number 22A229. Is there somebody here to, um, present the plan? Ed? Yes, Adam.
Secretary of the Party Trust, and we're going to be withdrawing the application. It is no need for the board to take any further action.
You're withdrawing the application?
You're withdrawing the application. That's correct, Vice Chair.
Okay, and we'll have a paperwork started on that tonight?
We'll get you off, something in writing, it's supposed to be-
Joanne, do you have a withdrawal paperwork in, in the Planning Board office? Adam, can you send us an email? To Joanne tonight? Joanne Snow, Secretary of the Planning Board.
So that I'm familiar with that, what does that mean? I mean, Samuel's draw means-
He's withdrawing the plan. All right, we will, uh- All right.
Hold on.
All right, let's, let's receive, all right. So we're gonna have discussion of the board and we'll open it up to public comment. We have to vote, we have to vote to do so, Adam, so that has to happen. Any, any comment?
Well, I'm making a motion to accept the withdrawal.
You can second it and we can have a discussion.
I'll second it so that we can have a discussion.
And what were you gonna say?
I just, um, I feel as though accepting their withdrawal of application based on the course of the events tonight is another way to put, to extend the timeline, to put in a new application in order to extend a new 14-day timeline.
Okay.
So if... I don't, I don't... Something isn't, something, uh, you know, when you, when you, when you're gathering all the facts to make the best educated decision based on all the facts that are presented to you and something just doesn't add up, this is one of those times. So I see it like this. We either vote to accept, which was the motion on the floor, which I seconded, to accept their resignation, which would allow them to just put it in later, which we would have just saved the last 45 minutes of back and forth argument and some blood pressure points, I'm sure. Or we can move forward and decline it as it sees fit, because clearly they don't want to have this. What is the point of them?
I don't know. We haven't even had this presented to-
No, what I'm saying is, is if they don't want, if they want to retract their, their application, then why don't we just decline it? Obviously, they don't wanna move forward with it. Otherwise, why would you decline it? You would only decline it if you were trying to somehow get around the bylaws of the 14-day window. So me not knowing the site plan, me not knowing what is going on here tonight or why, this does not sit well with me personally as a resident of Halifax. So they can retract or rescind or, or withdraw their application all they want, but all that does is give them another opportunity to get around whatever game we're playing here tonight. So-
Well, it seems like they want a full board here.
Which, which that in, that, that right there tells me everything I need to know about their involvement in it. Because once those two boards go, once those two board members go, now he retracts his application, that in and of itself should be an ethics issue. All of a sudden, when they were there, they couldn't wait to be on this, on this, on, on, on this agenda. Then they both dismissed themselves without recusing themselves, without any kind of part, they pardoned themselves of any responsibility as elected officials. And then when their two guys leave, and I'm sorry, let me, I retract that statement.
So you're saying that they're two guys?
I retract that statement. When I say that the two people-
So you're accusing them?
No, I retracted that statement.
Like planted here to make-
I retracted that statement.
But there's two of them and there's five of us.
I retracted that statement. I'm saying that as soon as two people, as soon as two people removed themselves, now they wanna withdraw their application. That's not, nobody else has a red flag on that on this board, not from the public? That's not, that's not sketchy to you? Come on.
No, it's not.
Rick, we've been doing this for a year and a half.
You were about to leave.
Rick.
I was, no, I was just curious if there wasn't a quorum, that's what I said. If there wasn't a quorum, what happens with the 14 days?
So listen, hold on.
Lido, back Plaza.
So-
So if that's the case, if they were corrupt and wanted this to fly through, they wouldn't show up-
You said that. He did not. You said, you said that word, just for the record, nobody else did.
What's that?
I'm not even gonna say it. The word you just said. That's what you said.
What I'm saying is that everything was good until two guys left and now he wants to withdraw his application.
The two guys, not because of a letter they got.
About their involvement with the person on the agenda. And then once those two people who are in question leave, that guy, that, that person, that remove their, removes their application? Like, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, right? I'm certainly not Johnny Cochran, but it doesn't, it's one plus one here. You know what I'm saying? So this is unbelievable that this is the game that we're playing as grown adults in the town of Halifax.
This Amanda Estates has been a game for a long time.
It's, and it's sad that it's gotten to this point.
All the money this town's lost because of that place.
Lost?
Yes, lost. Tax, regulations, lawyers.
Hold on.
If we have anybody in the public that needs to, they need to raise their hand and be called upon before they will speak.
I don't, that does not make sense to me. If you wrote that up on a-
What do you mean?
If you put that up on a whiteboard and you wrote it down and you looked at it, you would look at that and say, nah, that's not right. What just happened here tonight and then that action to withdraw his application-
So how's that, how's that gonna work if we go ahead and vote on this now and we look at the plans and all that, so how, isn't that gonna be a little funky now because what's going on?
No, because then what we can do is we can not accept his withdrawal. We can make a motion because he wanted to withdraw to then just decline his application and then it goes down that the Planning Board declined his application. That would be the next move, if that's what we feel is right.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Any further, any further discussion?
Is this where we open it up or no?
We can open it up to public discussion. That will be very calm, controlled-
And directed at us.
And nobody else.
Not at each other. Please, that's what you guys pay us for.
Gordon?
Gordon, we, planning board members, 24/12, I would request that any plan I sent in by The Party Trust are sent to land use so that the planning board has been given because of all the legal aspects of it, that you get a legal analysis of what's being submitted, whether or not you should approve it or not.
Fair?
But that doesn't give us, does that give it, that, that nauseous outside of the 14 days?
No, I, I would ask you to vote no with us tonight.
Well, then there's also the option that we could ask for an extension on the time.
Which is what? Bert just, that we just declined on, for Bert?
No, we, we declined on delaying and making a meeting within the 14 days because I don't have time over the next 14 days to have another meeting, so we could put it on a meeting that's already scheduled.
I understand that.
Yeah.
However, upon certain actions that happened tonight, which again, I have no idea what's going on behind the scenes here. So whatever it is, I'm going based off the actions that happened tonight. happened tonight, two people were made aware that they may have a conflict of interest. As soon as those people came, the person that was on the agenda that had an application in requested to withdraw his application. That's not... That's not behavior that makes sense. So therefore, I would not entertain extending time. We're either going to accept his withdrawal, or we're going to decline his application, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm just one vote.
Dennis Cameron.
Dennis Cameron, 228-23. First, just a clarification, you're talking about the recusal, you're talking about keeping out of the discussion for the vote on something, you're not necessarily absenting, you're not leaving, that there's two different things, and there are two different acts. So just to be clear, the recusal is different from someone leaving the meeting and not being part of it. Question, you folks talk about your form, is your form not three out of five?
It's three out of five.
It is three, so you technically still have the form to do business.
That's correct.
The last question I have is, is it appropriate question to ask probably applicants who are saying they're withdrawing, to ask why? Is that something that's...
We could certainly do.
We're conjecturing about what their reasons might be, I'm curious if they have a formal statement of why they're withdrawing their application.
Adam Brodsky.
Good morning, Chair.
Did you hear...yes, I would.
Thank you, and by the way, I do not believe that we need the board's permission to withdraw an A and R plan, this is not a public hearing, and if you withdraw it any time prior to endorsement. And the reason is not fair, I am working from home because I'm caring for my ill wife, and I could not physically be there, I'm finding it really impossible to represent my client via Zoom.
What are the...so that's the reason?
And so we're withdrawing so that I can, in the hopes of re-filing and attending in person, so I can do my job. I look up a lot of copies of the recusal letters...
Thank you.
...as far as anyone else, I like to get copies of those, I like understanding what the obligations are, and I think we can do my job tonight, either this is not even real Zoom, because I can't even keep people, I can't imagine what I was speaking.
Thank you, Adam.
The reason for withdrawing the application is so I can do my job. I'm not reading into anything that was submitted, I haven't seen what was submitted, I don't approve submitted it, and I'd like to understand all that so I can announce my plan. So that's the reason why we're withdrawing, and I appreciate you taking a vote, you know, being a vote, it's been withdrawn, I voiced the email to this now, withdraw the application at the end. Thank you.
Okay, what is...
Anybody else? Are everybody good?
Alan? Alan Palmer, they're being concrete or butter. I understand that, what was that, apply for, there's something required, I would like to know one of the meetings, and it was just by accident that I found out about it. Is there any way to do that, or is that something that's probably reliable, is it necessary so it's not done?
That's correct.
Anything like this?
An A and R plan is not something that we need to send out letters for. The application was put in on November 1st, we received the plan at 2:57 as they PM today as the planning board, and that's when I saw the plan for the first time, actually when I got the email, which was later than that.
So the question, the question on the table, I think, or my question on the table is, to his point of he can withdraw at any time, that's his right, and I do understand as an attorney that new information was provided, which would not allow him to represent his client to the best of his ability, which he has an obligation to do as well. So I do sympathize with him for that. My question is, though, do we still need to vote either to accept it, or do we also retain the right to vote to decline based on the actions that were here tonight? And if we decline it, if we accept the withdrawal, what does that mean? If we decline the application altogether because it has been opened on our agenda meeting, what does that mean?
I would probably refer to some of the talk that we've had and agree with the fact that we should obtain legal counsel or some sort of land planning review of the plan before we make a decision either way on it, just to prevent a major catastrophe.
Right, so to accept his...to his point, we don't need to accept it, but a motion was on the floor to accept his withdrawal, it was seconded, so then...
According to him, he doesn't need the...he doesn't need the board to vote on it.
Right, so what we would be doing is we would be voting whether or not to just straight up deny it. Because he doesn't need our... I don't know, this is...
David Masco.
David Masco, 1610, this was requested on the 1st of November, to be on meeting for today, and today they want obviously to withdraw, so they do...they do...that doesn't make any sense.
No, they're withdrawing based on the fact that new information was provided to...
Who said otherwise?
No, no, so they're withdrawing because of a letter, because of the letter that was presented to two of the board members that resulted in two out of the five leaving. So him as an attorney trying to represent his client to the best of his ability and saying, whoa, 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 game has changed here, I can't do my job not knowing what was presented to him.
I thought you said because of his wife that was ill.
But that's why he can't be here tonight.
That's why he can't be.
If he was here tonight, then he would be able to read the letter himself, he doesn't have that luxury, so he can't...
So if I failed today or yesterday...
You never know.
We don't know.
We don't know, it's not the point. All of it.
I didn't hear that, I didn't understand, like they booked it on 1st, it's the 3rd, it's not.
Now, to my understanding, and I don't know, Adam, if you're still on the line, but to my understanding, he was going to do his job to the best of his ability to represent his client to the best way that he could, based on the information that we were going to discuss tonight, and then new information was presented to the board, which he does not have, is not privy to, which does not allow him to act on behalf of his client, which he is paid for.
I'm sorry.
So that's what I think.
I get it.
Adam, is that accurate?
Well, hold on, I want...that is accurate.
Adam, can I just get a confirmation that that's accurate?
That's right, forgive me, I can't even see who was asking the question.
Yeah, sorry, that was...
Here, clearly here, all of people speaking.
So either way, that's...
I'm just trying to do the best I can do, and I can't hear them in these circumstances.
Understood. Based on information that he values?
Certainly, I'm prepared to hear his decisions, you know, the combination of supporting the circumstances of requiring withdrawal, but we wanted to get this thing done, but we're not in a position to be able to rehearse.
And especially with...especially with an A and R, there's a lot of state regulation that goes in, that is involved in A and Rs, so it is a very specific conversation that needs to be had, and a lot of details need to be discussed in order to make sure that the proper decision is made, so it is certainly not something that can be done by winging it. Sorry.
Gordon.
I would ask the board to take a vote to send any further plans to land use counsel to have it reviewed.
Well, there's a vote on the table right now to accept his withdrawal that apparently he doesn't need our vote for, or our approval to accept. So what I think would end up...
But I'm not exactly sure about that 100%.
So here's what I see happening, if you follow the logic. They're going to withdraw, then they're going to put it back in. In the meantime, that starts a new 14-day window. Within that time, the two people who removed themselves are going to have plenty of time to speak with the ethics committee. Once they put that information back in, we will then have them back on the agenda, to which we will hear your request to send all plan information to planning board.
Oops, sorry.
Timing is still going to be an issue, but what I'm asking is, as soon as the plan...
Why is timing going to be an issue?
Depending upon which date it comes in.
No, well...
What I'm asking is...
But if they withdraw, if they withdraw their application, you may as well burn all that stuff.
What I'm asking, Gordon, is to any new plans coming in from the Party Trust, that the planning board takes policy, that it sends those to land use counsel for review, so that the planning board has the best information of what they should approve or not approve, so that you do that as a board tonight, take a vote as a policy, send the plans to land council as soon as they come in. That way you get updated information, and you're not waiting until the night that's supposed to be, when it's the 13th day, and you don't have time to get it reviewed, because you're going to run into the same issue.
So I believe, now that this has been what it's been, I do not believe, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong, and everybody in here will tell me if I am, at least a couple people will, if they withdraw, then there's...I don't think we can then take their old plan and then put it through. Hold on, so if they put in a new application, they withdraw it, and they put in a new application before the next meeting, the 14-day starts over?
Correct.
Upon that new application, we submit all of the paperwork to the land use council, so that when they are on the agenda, we then have the new application with the land use report, so that we can have an educated conversation, all while at the same time, the ethics committee can review with the two other chairmen, or the two other board members, to say whether you can be here or not. Go ahead.
I guess what I'm asking you to do is to take a vote, send the plans before your meeting, when they submit, as soon as they submit.
Okay.
Board takes a vote for any future plans from the Party Trust on development on that band, because of all the previous lawsuits that have taken place, that the board gets outsized.
Okay, so I believe because there's a motion on the floor, we actually have to vote, like by law, like law, right? So what I would do, if we're trying to get this done, in one way or another, what I would suggest is that we make the recommendation to the parties involved, that before submitting your new application and request to be on the agenda, that you submit the site plan to us with the application, or your...all the information with the application, so that we can send it out to land use council and give the board enough time to do their due diligence, so that we have all the information for the next meeting, within the 14 days. In other words, don't put the application in and then give us your plans 13 days later. It's before the next application, you got to submit all the information so we can do our due diligence.
I cannot see in any of these cases here, any process that states whether or not we need to accept or not accept, it doesn't really say either way, we don't have any court cases that are listed here that have stated whether or not we should or we should not vote on accepting the withdrawal. Therefore, I believe we need to vote on it just to be safe, because it started, I don't know if everybody else agrees, but I know that usually, from what we have done on the planning board, we do make a lot of motions to be sure that what we are stating is...
So worst-case scenario, we vote, let's say that it goes as we're going to accept, whether he needed that or not, at least we voted on it to clear our side. With...I would like to say this one last piece, and then I'll call on it. No matter what happens, this is a small town, and this will get around the small town quickly. So whether it is just a coincidence that two people were handed a letter at the, you know, 12th hour, whatever it is, which is your right, you're right, 100%, that's what you're here for as a resident, which then created those courses of action, which then created a withdrawal of application, that is going to go through this town like lightning. And the next time, this is on our agenda, I bet you we're meeting back up here, and there's 75 chairs, and I bet you a lot of people are going to do a lot of research in the meantime. So just know what you all are asking for, because I'm telling you, it would have been easier to do it tonight, one way or another. So just know that that's what we're about to deal with over the next two or three meetings. Go ahead. I don't know if I'm allowed to call, call.
No, it's fine. Karen.
Karen, please, this is Lady Bosworth. The only concern I would have is it's something requested for the future, for anyone that applies for a permit, how to skirt this. And, you know, I'm working very tight, I do agree with the permit, that, you know, a vote should be made on this, and is it coincidence? I don't know, it kind of does smell a little bit. And I just think they opened up the door, that you don't want to have a wait for future applicants and petitions, that you don't have to do the exact same thing.
Yeah.
And we have to follow our bylaws, that's the job, follow the bylaws, whatever the bylaw says, I think that's what you have to do.
So the hard part about this is there is no bylaw as to whether or not we have to vote to accept his withdrawal. So if we go and decline his application and put that in writing, when he, you know, prefaced the declination with a withdrawal, then we're all liable, right? And we don't want to do that either. So you're 100% right, where it doesn't...I mean, let me rephrase that, the points you made are valid, but I don't know if we have the...
People have to skirt the system.
And you know what? That's the hard part about bylaws, is there's always holes, and the right person with the right amount of time will find holes.
So then maybe this is what we do.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so we got to vote to accept.
So this is going to be part of my discussion. So maybe what we do is say, we do not accept, just hear the whole process out, we do not accept your withdrawal, that we move forward with an extension on the A and R plan that will allow our next meeting to be encompassed in the timeframe. Therefore, making everyone be able to get this looked at, these two can go to town council and figure it out, and then we can have a full board, there's no way if...
Or not, or maybe not, depending on what the ethics committee says.
Right, but whatever would be worked out.
Yeah, so my question with that is, it's a special extension, that is now giving another extension to a very specific cut-and-dry timeline.
But it would probably doing...
It's another...
It would probably be doing the process correctly, I understand, but it would be making it so that this works out, we look at this plan, see if it even fits, right? And we have advice and the whole nine.
I think the way that this works is, he already withdrew it, he's on record for withdrawing it, so he may not even need our approval, or we could decline it, he goes, decline everything you want, you don't, I don't need your permission. So at the end of the day, if he declines it and walks away and never comes back, that was his decision. If he declined it for the sake of being able to come back at another time and reapply, then we do everything that you just said. So I think what we have to do is vote to accept his or deny his withdrawal, and it may not even be needed, but there's a motion on the floor, and I think for protecting our due diligence, we need to at least vote yea or nay.
I think we need to repeat the motion on the floor and make sure that it's very, I mean, very said, like reset.
One more time.
Motion to accept the withdrawal on Amanda's Estates.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? Can I entertain that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.